The League of Women Voters is a non-political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase the understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses a candidate or a political party. No campaign literature may be distributed inside this room or immediately adjacent there too. Thank you for attending this important candidates forum. It may be the only time, the last time, you will see and hear all the candidates in this place prior to the election on May 8th. As you can see, we have three people who have stepped up to the plate and are willing to devote substantial time to the office of mayor for this city. It is most important that everyone remain as quiet as possible so that we can all hear these candidates as they address the questions asked of them. Please turn off your cell phones and electronic devices at this time. No other video was permitted during this forum other than that by the League. Due to the time constraints, it may not be possible to ask all the questions that have been submitted. Questions will be representative and pertinent to the office being sought. We have two people handing out three-by-five cards or index cards. There's one. And you write your question on a card. When you have it ready, hold up your card, they'll come and pick it up from you. And they'll return it to our table over here. Tonight's program is in three sections. The first mayoral candidates will have just two minutes to introduce themselves and tell you why they want to be elected. The sequence will be in an order that we've already determined by a chance draw prior to the forum. The second section is questions will be asked of each candidate, the questions that you write down on your cards. They will be allowed two minutes to respond. I take that back, ninety seconds to respond. Questions will be directed to a single candidate or to all three candidates. In any event, all candidates will have an opportunity to respond to each question. The third part is each candidate will have two minutes to make their closing remarks. That sequence has also been predetermined by a chance draw. We can begin now. Opening questions. Mr. Grant, you have two minutes. Opening statement.
Thank you. And I'm glad to see so many here because this is an important election. I'm Avery Grant and I'm running for mayor along with my bringing back the Long Branch community team of Ed Anasagio and Dennis Michale. And we're concerned because we have three motivations. One, respect. We want us to grow up like we've come through this town respecting each other, your neighbor, the community, the city government. And we also want accountability in our government. We want the government to respond. If you have an issue, they should respond. Maybe they can't do it and they say, "No, we can't do that," or they can. So we want to have that accountability. And then, community. We want you to feel like you live in a community. And that's why we're here. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel and a Vietnam vet, and I came from Germany in 1967 on my way to Vietnam and not knowing whether I might come back in a bag, I built a home here. And when you're in Vietnam for six months, you can go anywhere in the Pacific that you might want to go. And I chose to meet my wife in Hawaii. And she said to me, "Avery, I don't care where the Army sends you, I'm staying in Long Branch because I like Long Branch." Because the Chamber of Commerce came and brought her a ditty bag and a map of the city. The League of Women Voters brought her a registration for voting. And Reverend McGill of St. Luke's United Methodist Church came and I actually took her to the church with the kids. And she was saying, "I just like the community." And that's why we got so involved. And maybe as I go along, I can talk to you about a lot of activities I've... And one person said, "What has Avery done?" And I took time to count, I'm up to about seventy-three plaques in commendation for things I've done. And it's been in all parts of this city, the county, and the state because I love it. I came from Memphis, Tennessee where people greet you.
Your time is... Your time is up.
Thank you. We'll talk later.
Mr. Schneider.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name's Adam Schneider and I've been the mayor of Long Branch since 1990. I've really only made one promise in all those years, and that was to make this city a better place to live. And I've done my best every single day I've been mayor. And if you look around the town, you can see the results. You can see it in the police department that has made this town significantly safer to live in. You can see it in the oceanfront, which is now the economic engine that drives the city. You can see it in the parks, in the open space, where you can look at Jackson Woods, which was one of the first team efforts that I worked on with a group of people, a group of private citizens to acquire. You can see it in Manhasset Creek Park, which is now one of the largest active recreation sites in the county of Monmouth and it's award-winning. You can see it in taxes, which have been stabilized because now for the first time in many generations, this city has a stable tax base. You can see it in the Chamber of Commerce, the membership of which has climbed dramatically, something like ten times because we work with them. And we put on an event like Ocean Fest amongst other things, and now people want to open up their businesses. You can see it in the jobs, which are all over this city. They're on the ocean, they're in West End, they're now on Broadway, where our unemployment rate is about four percent. You can see it all over this city. You can see it in how we work with the school and the school administration. You can see it in the public safety and the volunteers and the fire department and the first aid squad that we make work. But most important, you can see it in team play. People who work together, like working together, and don't care about who the credit because if things get better, we all do well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pallone.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm John Pallone and I want to thank the Link News, the Women Voters, and everyone in the audience for being here this evening. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, who I am, why I'm running for mayor, and what my teammates and I stand for. I was born in Long Branch, graduated right here from Long Branch High School. Now my wife and I are raising our son here. Public service has been a part of my life for as long as I can remember. And I've tried to give back in a number of ways as a volunteer EMT, as a trustee of the Long Branch Public Library, and as a vice president of my son's PTA. For the last year, eight years, I've served on the Long Branch City Council, and it's been very rewarding. There's so many great things about our city, the diversity of our people, the pride we have in our community. But most of all, it's the neighborhoods and the community groups that make Long Branch special. These neighborhoods unfortunately are not getting the attention and resources they deserve. Abandoned properties are a blight on our community. We need to force the banks and absentee landlords to clean up these properties. We need to put Long Branch back to work for large-scale construction projects who require that developers train and hire Long Branch residents. For too long now, new development has been concentrated on just a few square blocks on the waterfront, and it seems the rest of Long Branch has been forgotten. We need to make sure that new development helps all of Long Branch, not just Pure Village. We also want to engage the community. We want all residents to feel that their voices are being heard. We want to listen and learn from you. That's our job. I'm running with an incredibly diverse group of men and women who will treat people with decency and respect. They're leaders, people who are respected and trusted, with the ability to bring people together and to get things done. It's time for a change, and that's why I'm asking you to support me and my running mates, Dr. Mary Jane Selly, Bill Dangler, Rose Wittes, Mario Viera, and Dr. Anita Booth. Together, we can make our city even greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question from the audience is to all candidates. Says, "Our town motto, the friendly city. The campaign mailers have been anything but friendly. If elected as mayor, how would you uphold our town motto?" Let me start with Mr. Grant.
Well, you might laugh, but I spent thirteen years in Memphis, Tennessee where I was born. And there you find a tremendous community. So I'm going to start a smile campaign. And I'm going to put banners up that says, "Long Branch is a Smile City." And I'm going to talk to community groups. I want you to look at someone and just smile. You don't have to talk. My grandson, my youngest won't even go to the mall with me. They said, "Don, you know too many people, you smile, you talk to people, we never get out of here." But you feel good. And my wife, while I was in Vietnam, she was pushing the kids down. We used to have a nice shopping center on Broadway. And one day, the lady was sitting on the porch, she said, "Come here, girl." And you know she was from the South. "You look like a Williams." And sure enough, it was a relative she'd never heard of. And that's what I want to do. I want you to feel good about Long Branch. And we'll talk about that, the things we used to do. I have about twenty-one organizations I've done with there, including volleyball. And we'll talk about that maybe later, where we got together. Thank you.
Would you like to add to that, Mr. Pallone?
Sure. There's a lot of things that... limited things that you can do as a councilman, but one of the things that I'm most proud of in the last eight years is being responsive to the constituents. When somebody gives me a call to respond, to see what I can do, you can't always help everyone. But when I can, it's great. And so, what's important to me is literally to reach out to every neighborhood and to community, to anybody who calls me, and to help them if I can, and to be responsive. We are an incredibly diverse community. We're a group... Long Branch people in Long Branch take pride in our community. And I live by that, and I try to do that every day. And I try to bring people together to not be decisive, divisive, I'm sorry, and to include all, to make people feel that their voice matters. And I think that adds to what's being a friendly city.
And they can move. Thank you.
My turn, sir?
Yes, it is.
The question was about the mailers that have gone out during this campaign and how ugly those mailers are. Well, neither Mr. Grant or I have sent out a single mailer yet. And everyone is the responsibility of Mr. Pallone and his team. Even though their names don't go on them, it's their responsibility unless we want to believe that several hundred thousand dollars has been spent by a group that just happens to be interested in this election. It's PAC money being spent that doesn't get disclosed. It's Citizens United coming right here to Long Branch. And all of those mailers have been dishonest and despicable. My campaign has been about going door-to-door and talking to people in every single neighborhood. We've hit most, if not all, of the neighborhoods in Long Branch, and we're not done yet. I like talking to people. I love going to the events. I've been going to the games, the sports, the concerts, the plays, going food shopping. You know, it used to be go out for a quart of milk. I can sympathize with Mr. Grant. They'd send me out for a quart of milk, I'd come home an hour later because I'm talking to people. This is a great city, and it will be a great city after this election because the people of this town know better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question regarding mailings. A recent mailing specified that developers of large-scale construction projects would be required to hire and train Long Branch residents. How would this requirement be implemented, enforced, and funded? And to what extent will taxpayers' dollars be utilized for this program? Mr. Pallone, would you take that question, please?
Sure. First off, I'm a big supporter of unions. That's number one. But one of the issues that I think we're facing here in Long Branch is that we need to negotiate some of these development deals with the attitude of when a large developer comes into the city, they should be doing what we want them to do, not what they want to do. And so I firmly believe that when someone comes to Long Branch, we should say to them and mandate if we can, "You know what? You want to come to Long Branch? We want local jobs. We want a training program. We want public benefits. We want stakeholders involved in these things. We want public access to parks and to things like that." In other words, we want set-asides for these developers when they come into town. I wanted to just go back for a moment. I mentioned many of these independent expenditures that are taking place in the city. I have no knowledge of who's sending them out, and I have no knowledge of them. The mayor knows that, and yet he keeps insisting that it's being put out by me. That's just not accurate.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
Yes, that's an interesting question. Because I was a city engineer of East Orange, I was called down to Ashbury Park because they were working on a re-entry program. And we were able to get the union to drop the requirement for a driver's license so that they could hire some of those people. Now, also, I was called to Irvington, New Jersey. And what they were doing, they had a developer because they had a lot of abandoned homes. And I set up an eight-week course, four-week course training in classroom and four-week on the job. And we hired fifty citizens to work in these abandoned houses. Luckily, Kennelworth is where the union has their training school, and they gave me materials and we taught it. I don't know if everybody's from Irvington. I use the servicemen's club to do that. And we trained these people, and they got jobs renovating abandoned homes. Can you imagine what we could do with things like that? And also, we have a summer employment program. Every summer, I would get a hundred youth from the schools. Is that the goal?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. And they would... They would work four hours a day, and they would get paid. And I made a mistake when they first came because I talked to all of them. I told my administrative section, "Have donuts and milk for them." They didn't want that. They wanted sodas and potato chips. So that's what I gave them when they left. But we can do a lot of things. There are government programs that, since you pay federal taxes, we should get some of that money back so we can put our people to work. And we can look at some of these...
That's... Yeah, that's... Time is up.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Mr. Schneider.
When we negotiate developer agreements, the first thing we do is examine their finances to make sure the project is going to be successful. And each one of the projects that's put a shovel into the ground has been successful in this town. We know exactly what they're going to spend on labor costs before they start. Labor unions will drive those costs up and would have to be subsidized by the taxpayers. How do we know this? Because we go into the costs of labor between unions and non-union jobs, and we see what the expenses are going to be. When we hire, when the city hires, we hire local. If you look at our department heads, our police department, our fire department, our department of public works, we hire almost exclusively from our town. We make sure that our money stays local. When we negotiate with a developer, we make sure the project's going to be successful. Now, one of the first things we did is we looked at what other towns did in terms of forcing unions, union labor or apprentice programs. I talked to the mayor of Ashbury Park. He found it didn't work. I talked to the Regional Planning Association, one of the largest planning associations in the country, and their policy is to recommend against forcing union labor and against forcing local labor because those are almost impossible to enforce and to mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. This question begins, "When I drive through Long Branch, I see lots of boarded-up houses and trash-filled lots. Why isn't something being done on this? What is your vision for Long Branch?" Mr. Schneider.
Sure. I drive through Long Branch every day, and I don't see many abandoned or trash-filled lots. In fact, if you were in court today, Tuesday, there were probably fifteen property owners in court on code violations. We do that every single week. In the course of a year, there's probably five hundred separate property owners that have gotten notice of violation and either cleaned it up or brought to court and then fined and punished and still made to clean it up. On occasion, we'll go even the next step. We'll clean it up or we'll even demolish and put a lien on the property. That doesn't happen all that often because most property owners are not going to let it go that far. We've increased the size of the code department. We actually have uniformed code enforcement officers. We're on every street virtually every single day making sure that properties are kept up to code. We know which banks foreclose on properties. We know which ones are owned by which people, and we enforce the rules as best we can. We do a good job at it.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
Yes, that is an issue. And what we did in East Orange is we would have all of our trucks had radios. So when garbage collectors went out, they would call back to the headquarters and say, "This is an issue. This is an area of problem." And we would then follow up with code enforcement because we had a code enforcement counselor being the engineer. I had my engineers on that council. So we worked closer with them in those issues. But there are issues, and I think we could improve that. I had my yard cleaned and my trash has been in front of my house now for almost two and a half weeks. That should not be. We should always... And I'm not knocking our people. When they come through, they do a good job. But apparently, there's some reason why my trash, my leaves and stuff is still there for two and a half weeks. We need to correct that and make it better because that makes you feel like you're a community. When you can walk out and you see the streets are clean, the roads are paved. And that's another issue that I would raise. I had the small Barbara Green, which is a paving machine. So if you had a pothole, I could have it covered in a day and have the streets moved out. We need that type of equipment. It's not that expensive. So I agree with you. We need to have some kind of program that is organized that keeps you satisfied that we think about you and we want a nice friendly town that you can go out and enjoy, invite your friends to come.
Thank you. Mr. Pallone.
Again, sir, I just wanted to comment on Mayor Schneider's previous comment. When he's talking about union labor, I didn't hear him say that he had talked to anybody from a union. I think he was talking to developers. That's what I heard him say. I've talked to union labors, union leaders. As a matter of fact, Mario Viera, who is running with me, is a union leader, and he can tell you about union labor, and he can tell you about apprenticeship programs, and he can tell you about using two or three apprentices with a full-time person, and he can tell you about using Long Branch residents who can take care of their family and keep the money here in Long Branch. He can tell you a lot about that. Now, just moving on to abandoned properties, what we need to do... And again, Mayor Schneider is saying that he has not seen many abandoned properties? I mean, just off the top of my head, what about the red building on Washington Street in Julyne that's been there for decades? What about Belmont Avenue? What we need to do is we need to register these... We need to register all of these abandoned buildings. We need to get much stricter on enforcement. We need to... If they're owned by out-of-state banks, we need to get an in-state bank to take care of these properties. If not, we have to get aggressive, take care of it ourselves, and then send them the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems that the new Broadway developers have run the same problems that the previous developers had. They don't seem to have enough money to complete the project. What do you do when this happens, when they can't put the funds together? Mr. Schneider.
Actually, that's not the problem at all. These developers have the money. The developers agreement, which Mr. Pallone voted for, Dr. Selly voted for, not all that long ago, includes language in there that after they get planning board approval, they're going to get their financing. What they've done is they have already shown that they've done projects this size and bigger. We validated it quite some time ago. These guys have pumped several million dollars into the Long Branch economy. DRA, Developer Diversified Real Estate Associates, also known as Long Branch Partners in their local... That's the title they own the land in, brought their taxes, current, and have continued to pay their taxes. They paid the city close to a million dollars that we owed. They dismissed their own lawsuit. They dismissed their tax appeals. They got their plans approved by the council. They've been before the planning board. They're moving in the right direction a hundred percent. This idea that they don't have the money is a fallacy. It's right in the agreement what they have to do, and the agreement was approved unanimously. Their funding, one of the members of DRA sits on a bank board, they've spent over six million dollars in the last year getting up to speed. A year ago, I didn't think I'd be able to say that. I'm very happy at the state of development. Two million dollars spent demolishing those properties. The land given to the city for the summer so we could park cars, we made another million dollars on that. The code violations are gone because the buildings are gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pallone, I'm sure you're anxious to answer that question.
My first question is, if they have the money, why did they let every single one of their fifty-one properties go to tax lien and tax sale? They didn't pay their taxes in 2014, they didn't pay their taxes in 2015. Everyone in the audience has to pay their taxes, but somehow, they have all this money and couldn't pay their taxes. They also sued the city for seventy-five million dollars. They also had five hundred thousand dollars in code violations. We gave them a conditional redevelopment agreement. We gave them a redevelopment agreement. The mayor is right. I voted for it. I didn't have much choice, but I won't go there. But where I will go is for three years, we have asked them to show the financial capability that they had the financial wherewithal to do this project, and to this day, they still have not. Now, let's think about it one moment. Whether you're a small developer in Long Branch or a large developer in Long Branch, common sense would say that you're going to show the financial capabilities to do a project before you even get started with them. This has not been the case with this group. And it was not the case with the group before, back in 2004, Broadway Arts Center. Same situation. You had a situation where they owned the property, did not have the financial wherewithal to do it. The financial crisis hit. DRA, which was known as purchasing distressed properties, that's what they do, that's what they know best, took it over, and here we are.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
Yes, a couple of questions. One is, you need to keep the population informed as to what you're doing. And that's one of the reasons why we go to all the community groups in East Orange and let them know what we were doing. And our first development program was a two-block area in Brick Church. And when I brought the developer in, and luckily, we had our own in-house attorney. In fact, the one who owns Washington Manor here, Bill Eaton, was my attorney. And we brought them in and we had them to research and make sure that they had money to do what they wanted to do. And I said, "Look, you're the first developer. I'm going to knock down the two blocks of buildings. I'm going to put the perimeter sidewalk in, bring the utilities to the property line, and I'll throw my wife in if you want her to get you there." But we're up to three, phase three, and we're still giving tax abatements. And right now, I'm working with Senator Troy Singleton to get that legislation changed, SB 59, the change on this tax abatement process because we're losing money on this and there's no need for it. But really, we need to keep you informed as to what we're going to do. Because if I'd known what they were going to do, I had planned a long time ago to put a bowling alley in that rug shop because I used to have fun at Parrish Bowling, and I'd have to go down to Bradley Beach now to bowl. So, you know, some things you could use, you could have people participate. I was part of the Long Branch tomorrow, and when they told me Long Branch wants ambiance being an engineer and planner, I say, "You're not going to have affordable housing here."
Thank you.
I salute and say goodbye. I don't have time to waste with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pallone, do you think that the Great Recession of the 2006-2008 had any role in the slow pace of the Broadway redevelopment?
I can't really answer that. The only thing I can tell you is what I said before, and that is that what we know, or at least what I know, is that the individual who owned the property, Broadway Arts Center, did not have the financial capability to do the project on his own. Yes, I believe maybe that did have something to do with his being able to get a financial partner when the crisis hit, absolutely. But that still doesn't address the, you know, the initial statement that I made is that I think if somebody's going to come into town with a large-scale project, they really need to have the financial wherewithal in order to, you know, to negotiate or to get at the table.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Schneider.
Of course, the recession affected that project. Next to the Great Depression, it was the biggest economic collapse Next to the Great Depression, it was the biggest economic collapse in this country's history, but we still persevered here in Long Branch. The partners that owned that particular development, those particular development rights, struggled to maintain it, but they were ultimately foreclosed. We worked with the next owner, which is now DRA. We are subject to the same economic conditions that the rest of the country is. Our goal is to work every day to make the place better and we've been doing that. And on the Broadway project, DRA, two years ago, had stopped paying their taxes. We weren't talking to them. And in fact, the negotiations only picked up, Mr. Pallone knows this because he's on the council, the negotiations only started when they started paying their taxes, when they brought their taxes current, when they cured their code violations, when they dismissed their lawsuits, when they dismissed their tax appeals. How does he know this? Because he sat in the council meetings and these things were discussed. Getting Broadway as far as it is now with the investment that these owners have made is a substantial improvement from where it was eighteen months ago. Two million dollars spent demolishing those properties. And if we care about local labor, Lucas Brothers and Pax Constructions did the demolition. Though, that money went to local employers and employees and stayed local.
Thank you, Mr. Grant?
Well, things revolve around money and that's why you have to make sure that you have a sound contract with the developer. And that's what we tried to do. And in East Orange, I talked with the mayor and the city council and I said, "We will give them a tax abatement completely. No taxes would be paid as long as they promise to hire some of our local people." And it might take a year longer, a year and a half longer to get it completed. So, yes, I would thank the recession and I'm glad that President Obama came and at the time, because we were heading for a depression and there were things that were going on that were really a disaster facing us. So we have to be concerned with that. And maybe there was a problem with the funding. And things change from day to day. Even the richest developers have problems. So I can understand that.
Thank you. This next question is a little bit esoteric, but I think, and I don't want you to spoil your closing remarks, but the question is, what is your vision for Long Branch, long term? Start with Mr. Grant, please.
Well, my vision is that we have a community again where we respect each other and that we have a feeling that we can come to City Hall if we have an issue. And that was what we had in East Orange and that's why I would visit community groups to say to them, "We're open. Whatever you want to do, we'll help you." And there were community groups who wanted to clean up lots. So I said, "All right, I'll send a truck and other equipment and men on the weekends. It costs me money." Once you get people feeling that they belong, then the attitude changes. They say, "This is my city and I want to work here." And as I said, "I want to start a Smile campaign because we can get back to where we want. I'd like to strengthen the U.E. Irving Prize Zone." Because these are people, they're not homeowners, I mean, store owners that have a lot of money, they can use a little help. And if we help them, there's a guarantee they're going to do better. So we can look at that. And I say the youth program, I had two hundred and ten employees, but I would get a hundred youth working for me. There are a lot of programs, even in the school system, we have the W.O. Work Opportunity Program where we do have kids working for the companies, for stores here in town that paid for. So I just envision a town where we can respect each other, the government is responsible and they respond to you and they can say no. And then we have a community that says, "Well, this is my town. I enjoy being in Long Branch."
Thank you. Mr. Pallone?
Yes, again, I just wanted to just go back to the last question very briefly and that is, yes, a lot of communities struggled with the recession for sure. But if you look at Asbury, if you look at Madawan, if you look at Red Bank, if you look at Freehold Borough, these are all communities who had that same struggle and they had beautiful, vibrant downtowns. We're still unfortunately, you know, with a vacant lot in Lower Broadway, so I think, you know, that needs to be addressed. But in terms of the futures you're talking about, this is a very simple answer and that is, my future vision for Long Branch is a vision of people who are happy. And what do I mean by that? People who are treated with respect, as Mr. Grant indicated. People who can afford to live in our community, people who can afford to stay here, people enjoy a quality of life and where a local government is responsive, where they're understood and where people are engaged and where there's activities and so forth for every gender, age, and that's it. Just happy.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
I see Long Branch continuing to progress in the direction that it's been going for almost the last twenty years forward. An improved library, you know, we've tripled the amount of money that the library gets. The Housing Authority, which has expanded and rebuilt almost the entire, their entire, all of their land, all of their buildings have been rebuilt by working with the city and with the state. I see more open space and parkland and more recreation activities. I see a ferry that goes to New York or off a pier that juts out into our ocean. I see a Broadway that is now getting developed and I see jobs and housing for all of its people. I see a city that everybody works together, maybe the most important thing we do is we work together, all these different groups, the Housing Authority, the Board of Education, the city, the police, making the city continue to be safer, cleaner, nicer. I see people who enjoy being here, who love this city. They come out for the Fourth of July, they come out for the concerts, they come out to all different sections of the city because it's a great place to be. They come out with their kids to go to see the Little League, which plays in Manhasset, or Pop Warner, American Youth Football. They love being in the city. It is a great city. We all, I believe we all love being here and living here, going to the beach here, working here, taking our vacations here. I try not to leave Long Branch at all in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question that also has an answer. It'll be a... What any plans do you have for the former Stella Maris Retreat property? Can this property, here's your answer, can this property be acquired by the city to be preserved, to maintain the cultivated meadow of natural plantings, be utilized as an operative museum, cultural center for the enjoyment of all Long Branch residents and visitors? Mr. Pallone?
You know, I must be honest, I can't answer that question. I mean, it's something that we all would like to see. We've lost so much of our history and we've had just an incredible history. I'm a member of the Seven Presidents, trustee of the Seven Presidents Museum. I mean, it's something that we struggle with every day. It's certainly something that I would like to preserve, but I don't know that we can at this point. I don't know what control we would have, to be quite honest with you.
Does Mr. Schneider have an answer to this?
It would be wonderful to preserve everything in this town. The cost of Stella Maris, I believe, would be about seventeen million dollars. We've done a pretty good job saving what we can. We've worked with the Church of the Seven Presidents, we saved Jackson Woods, we saved Manhasset Creek Park from being developed. And how we did that was we worked with Green Acres, we got money from the state grants and low-interest loans. We frequently had to match some of it. We made a commitment to preserving open space and parks. I think Stella Maris was just sold. I don't think the deed has crossed our desk. I worked with Clean Ocean Action was interested in buying it. The owners, I met with the, it wasn't a church, it was a particular, I believe it was the Sisters of St. Mary, I forget exactly which name, I met with them and we tried to come up with a way. But unfortunately, the price of oceanfront property, this is one case where the value of oceanfront property makes it very difficult to reserve for a private organization. You know, saving open space was the first thing that got me involved in local politics. And you have to know how Green Acres works and you have to know how the owner wants it to go. But we managed to save what we can and we've done a pretty good job of it.
Thank you. Would you comment on this, Mr. Grant?
Well, I don't know the full details there, but I do know that it was a very nice place. When I was vice president of Monmouth County Red Cross Board and we had a little office in Shrewsbury, we would have some conferences there and it was just a pleasant place to go. And things like that you like to preserve because there are limited areas where you can go and have a conference and it doesn't cost much and it's quiet and peaceful. We'd take a break and look at the ocean and that type of thing. But there's almost nothing that can't be done if you're willing to work together. You know, people talk about politics and I say, "You talk about politics being bad. It's not politics, it's politicians." Politics is good, they control the government and if you do it right, then you can have success. And I think with my team coming in, we will work that way because we've had the experience. I've had the experience with working with people from Trenton to Newark, to the shore around the state because I sit on several state committees. And I find that people are willing to hear what you say and do something if they think you're honest and respectful. You can't do everything. I can tell you a quick story. At East Orange, we had thirteen thousand trees between the sidewalk and the curb. They belonged to the city. I was on a ten-year recycling effort.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll tell it later.
All right, Mr. Grant, what do you think could be done to ensure that the citizens of Long Branch can afford to continue to live in their homes, in their hometown, as Long Branch continues to develop?
Well, I think we need to look first at accountable government and make sure we have audits. Now, in East Orange, I hate to talk about East Orange because that's my experience. And we had a liaison who was liaison to each department and they would work with you and they said, "Well, I want to do this." And it's funny thing, they'd say, "Twenty-five thousand dollars for your snow removal effort." And I knew that wouldn't get me through half of the contract. But to get some of the other stuff, I had to settle for that because I knew that they weren't going to let snow sit on the ground so they'd find money. So it was important that you have a liaison on that council, say, "Look, keep your act together, Avery." The same way, I would like to have community liaisons, people who could come to the city and say, "Look, we've got a problem here and we need to solve it." We had the march, Grant's March to East Orange where I sent my street people through cutting the grass. I said, "The people, I want you to cut your grass at the same time." And they did it. And you'd be surprised what the city looked like. So it's a matter of working with people, making them have their faith. And I could read you the citation that the council gave me when I left there, the saying, "You are creative enough to get us working and we appreciate it."
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Sure. One of the things that we put a high priority on, starting in nineteen ninety-four, was the building of affordable housing in this town. Virtually all of the redevelopment projects had an affordable housing component to it. And we've built and rehabbed with the help of the state, our Office of Community and Economic Development with Jake Jones, between seven hundred and a thousand units have been built and restored and repaired. We've worked with the Housing Authority to rebuild Grant and Garfield Court in Seabou Manor. They used our tax credits at times, some of our money, some of our affordable housing money to do all the work that was done down there. We've also stabilized the tax base. You know, if you're a taxpayer, the one thing that scares you the most, living in New Jersey or increased taxes, two years in a row without increasing the tax rate. We've also increased the values of everybody's property. You know, and at the same time, I'm talking about numbers in real estate, we've made the town a lot more fun to live in. You know, think about it, three nights in the summer, you go out to a free concert. Beaches are free for kids under the age of twelve and residents over the age of sixty-two. I now can get a free beach pass. We're trying to make, we are making this town a fun place to live. We have great schools, we have a library that has expanded because it gets more money. We have an additional library building that happened while I was mayor and that I worked on. So we're doing things that make this a better place to live every single day.
Thank you. Mr. Pallone?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the question was people being able to stay here and afford living in Long Branch, correct? So I think, I think really what a lot of that comes down to is taxes, lowering taxes or at least stabilizing taxes. I think the abatement issue is something that needs to be discussed. I think we have to keep an eye on spending, legal fees, consultant fees. But one of the things that I'm very proud of running with my teammates is that we have assembled a group of people who can help with all of this. So for...